This is the city commission meeting. Uh, could we have the roll call, please?
Smith.
Here.
Luke.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Robish.
Present. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you for that, and we're moving on to the agenda approval. Um, is there anything on the agenda that I missed to put on? If anyone has any additions?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Luke.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Mayor Robish.
Aye. Moving on to public forum, excuse me. Public forum is limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. Please state your name and address for the record. I believe Commissioner Clute has something for us.
I do. Thank you, Mayor Robish, from Dale Forton Superintendent Solid Waste regarding the Juneteenth holiday. The solid waste department rubble site will be closed Thursday, June nineteenth in observance of Juneteenth. Thursday's garbage, recycling, and grass collection will be done on Wednesday, June eighteenth. Please remember to have your containers out the night before as trucks will not be rerouted.
Thank you, Commissioner Clute.
Thank you.
I have one, one thing for public forum also. At this time, I would really like to, uh, show our appreciation to Doug, um, Ramsell for his dedication, his willingness to put his name, his reputation out on the line, and, um, for being the head of the county commission for the last few, several years. Um, Doug tragically passed away this last week, and we want to keep Jane and her family in our prayers and thoughts. And again, we appreciate his dedication and his willingness to lead this county, so. Uh, with that, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Matters appearing on the consent agenda are expected to be non-controversial and will be acted upon by the commission at one time without discussion unless a member of the commission requests an opportunity to address any given item. Items removed from the consent agenda will be discussed at the beginning of the formal items. Four point one is the minutes of June two, twenty twenty-five. Four point two, fuel quotes for city departments. Four point three, personnel items, seasonal hiring, um, for the city. Four point four, payment of the bills.
Motion to approve. Sarcum.
Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Luke.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Mayor Robish.
Aye. Moving on to petitions and communications, and six point one, consider requests from Craig Metzger to waive sidewalk requirement. I'm gonna turn this over to our city planner, Barry Cranston.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, Mr. Metzger has requested, uh, that the requirement for a sidewalk on the south half of his property be waived. He's agreed to, to install the sidewalk from the intersection of, I believe it's Fourteenth Street, I believe, uh, north to his, to his driveway, which would encompass all of his residential area. He has a couple of lots to the north of there, but, um, with that said, uh, there is a little bit different, uh, take on this because this sidewalk ordinance, uh, is in the sidewalk and street ordinance, and then so it's not a zoning thing per se. Uh, Brett did call me and ask me if I'd speak on behalf, and, and we have spoken with Mr. Metzger, so we're happy to do that. But generally speaking, the engineering office is in charge of that particular ordinance, and, uh, that said, it's not, that's why there's no, it's not a waiver per se. I know, uh, Commissioner Smith gave me a call and was asking for some clarification on that, and, and that's why there's, it's, the only waiver system that exists in our ordinance is within the planning and zoning, uh, title twenty-three, or chapter twenty-three, and so this, this lies outside of that, and so that's why it comes directly to the commission for consideration.
Sure.
So just wanted to clear that, clarify that for everyone. So Mr. Metzger is asking for a waiver from the requirement to install sidewalk along that southern border, and I have it up on the board up there so you can kind of see it. He does own five lots up there, so it is, uh, it is a large property. And, and Mr. Metzger is here. Do you wanna add something to that?
On the east side, I just measured out, there's a hundred, it'd be a hundred and five feet of sidewalk coming from the driveway.
Why don't you just, for the record, say your name and your address?
Craig Metzger, fourteen fifteen Iowa Avenue Northeast.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, go ahead and.
There, I, on the east side, I'd be doing a hundred and five feet coming from the, from the intersection going up to the edge of the gravel driveway. I have a concrete driveway, but not all the way out. Got twenty-four feet driveway, but that's where I'd wanna stop.
Sure.
Uh, the south side, there's, there's no, no driveways in the area at all on, on Iowa at all, but I understand where, I need to put some on the east side and probably want me to do that.
Okay. So your property starts, the, the bottom yellow is fifteen.
That's his property. Fourteenth. Fourteenth Street.
And you go all the way north to a block or?
Almost a block, not quite.
No, I, half a block.
Yeah.
Half block.
Six lots I have, that lot from the original install.
Okay.
I didn't want six, but he was, he was. He said, you're gonna need stuff to park stuff on.
Yeah. Yeah. So you would plan on doing the south?
The east.
The east side, all the way up?
From basically, in this picture, I'll zoom in a little bit. This is a boat right here, so he's agreed to basically come from this inside because his, his driveway is about to right here.
Yep.
Okay, and so he's agreed that he would at least take it to this lot line was my understanding of our last conversation, and then back down here to Fourteenth Street.
Okay, not all the way north then?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
In, in that vicinity, it's not, we don't have a drawing to scale or anything.
Yeah, no, I got you. I, I understand.
What would he, excuse me, have to refer to he? What would Craig's responsibility be ordinarily? It would be all of those lots?
Ordinarily, that's, that's how this ordinance is written.
Because.
We have made some, uh, deferrals that in the past were, for example, James White. At that time, when he installed his along Arizona, we were looking at a grant program, and so he agreed that if, if we got the grant and, and everything moved forward with that large project that he would install his at that time. But that grant program has ended now. I understand they're trying, trying to bring it back, but, um, today it's not here yet. It was, that was part of that school stuff, the route to schools program. Yep. But that was basically the only one since, since the determination by this body to insist that those sidewalks be installed.
Correct.
So Barry, if, if you would, please, um, from, let's see, from that boat where that boat is sitting.
Mm-hmm.
So you have two lots going north.
Right.
What's the measurement on that? Can you give a rough?
Two lots?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh-oh.
Fifty foot a lot.
Yeah, it's fifty, yeah, they're fifty foot lots, so.
Two fifty.
He's got, and, and he says if you own six, well, all the county shows right now is five lots per se. Yeah, okay, five, okay.
And then how?
I'm just heard that.
How deep are they?
Uh, hundred and sixty-five, I believe. Nope, uh, I'll tell ya.
He knows.
Hundred and fifty, yep.
Yep.
A lot of lots down on the south side of the railroad tracks are a hundred and sixty-five feet deep, so.
So seven hundred feet total is your whole lot?
Mm-hmm.
Would be all on the south side and the east side?
Uh, the east side is gonna be.
Two fifty?
Four, four. Two fifty, and then that south side is a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
So four hundred.
Right.
Four.
And just so I understand the request, so you, you're proposing nothing on the south side then?
Yeah.
Now, it looks like there is some existing sidewalk on the south coming from.
Uh, Dave Petersons, yes.
There is.
At least maybe not all the way across.
Right, but.
Yeah, just in front of the entrance.
Yeah.
Which nobody lives there, and that's wasting away.
Yeah.
Just doesn't matter in sidewalks, it was, oh, she picked her other.
Yeah, yeah, I hear ya. I guess.
If you're curious, there's gonna be curb and gutter someday, yeah. Put all the sidewalks in, but right now it's just gravel. And all the way down Iowa, there isn't a sidewalk to be found, which is the new ordinance, or if you build a new house, you need sidewalks, I totally understand.
Mm-hmm.
When was your house built, Craig?
It just got finished.
Just finished, okay.
Yeah. I did a lot of it myself.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We started in July of, uh, twenty twenty-three.
Well, for consideration, I guess what I'll, what I would be interested in is if, if those two lots weren't joined as ownership, they wouldn't be developed, correct?
Correct.
Technically, they are undeveloped, in my opinion.
So, uh, if we required the hundred and fifty north-south to the end of your garage, where the boat is, I don't know if that's a technical, legal way of saying it, but.
Kind of, except when I get to the gravel driveway, I don't wanna strip a sidewalk going in from there. Cause I got twenty-four feet of, of, of driveway coming out from the house now, and it's probably another twenty-four feet to get to the edge of the road.
Okay, maybe, maybe let me finish my thought on it, Craig, and, uh, if we went the hundred and fifty just for simplicity, north-south, and then the whole south end, and allow the two north properties to, um, stay where, the way they are unless it becomes developed in the future. Be something I'm throwing out there for the commission to discuss.
It's just a lot more expense with another hundred and fifty feet.
Well, I realize that, but the way it sits, you're talking, uh, one, two, three, five, four hundred and, four hundred feet.
Four hundred.
This would at least pull back on those two north properties a hundred feet. So, that's just something that I'm.
So is that a motion for discussion?
I would, I would move that as a motion for discussion, yes.
Second.
Okay. So Sean looks like he's wanting to say something.
Well, I was just trying to figure out a motion, but yes, I, I agree. I think we need to have sidewalk on the east side of lot eight, nine, and ten, and then all of the south, if we're staying consistent to what we've been doing. And I think that's very important for us to consider doing so, just because we have been very strong on this in other cases, and we are pushing to have sidewalks throughout our community, um, and this is just a continuation of that. And I understand that there's our gravel roads with no curb and gutter, but at the same time, if we don't enforce this now, when are we going to enforce it?
My, my comment would be, how do we document this so that the next time one of these comes up, cause these come up? You know, what, what is our specific rationale as to why we did not put sidewalk on those two? Because then, you know, the next time we say, well, it's because those lots are undeveloped, so then, does that mean the next time somebody does one and they say, well, my house is only using these lots, that part of the lot I'm not on?
My, my thought would be is that those two lots are developable lots if Mr. Metzger chooses to sell them off, or if they choose to join them in with something else. Right now, there's no house sitting on those lots, so to me, they're undeveloped lots. So if you chose to sell those, somebody builds a house on the three lots to the north of you, at that time, they would be required to put in sidewalks. Would be my thoughts.
Yeah, that's, I'm just asking a question because, you know, it's the same thing like when we talk about James White still. We gotta say, well, that was the deal, and we gotta explain it. So it's like every one of these, we gotta have a reason why, why we didn't, you know, the, the simplest thing, not so much for your pocketbook, but the simplest thing for this body would be to say, no exceptions ever. We always stick to our guns, cause every time we make exceptions, we gotta document why, and it creates something we have to explain the next time.
I do have a question. Are you done? Okay. Um, what is your intent for the other two lots?
Nothing at this time. Maybe five years from now, but.
Five years from now, what, what would you do?
Uh, shop. Garage shop. But like, right now, we might use the concrete added. I gotta tie all the knots together on this deal.
Yeah.
So Barry, would a garage shop, it, would that trigger the same provision?
It, in this case, it, what we would do is we would have to join those two north lots to his house lots. And then at that time, yes, I, in my opinion, it would trigger, because then it becomes a developed lot, and it would then trigger that of, the build out of those lots.
I mean, it says new dwellings.
Uh.
Not necessarily housing.
But again, it would be up to this body's decision, not, that, that's kind of the rub we run into with, in this, in the offices. Cause under this ordinance, the staff has no latitude to make those decisions, and, which is fine. Um, and that's why we invited Mr. Metzger here for, to do that, because then we get into, uh, you know, sometimes these he said, she said things where somebody got a break and, and it was for an unknown reason, and then, then ten years later, then everybody's like, well, why didn't they put a sidewalk there? So that, at least if it comes in front of this body, then, then it's out in this, in public record.
Well, the, if I may.
Yep, you both?
The, the other component to it, Rich, and, and I, I know it's this instance, but, um, you have those two vacant lots. My, my suggestion is to require where the, the house structure is on those lots. The two vacant lots, and then on the north side of it, there, I don't believe there's sidewalk on the north side.
There's five more lots in.
Right.
So it'd make a, you know, I understand I'm trying to do a little horse trading here, but.
No, I, and I'm, I'm not even, I mean, I, I seconded your motion, and I think the idea, you know, I have a tougher time not doing the south just because there is already some sidewalk coming, coming along that south side, and that gets you back over to the paved road, but as far as those two lots on the north, you know, that, that to me makes sense. I just think, are we treating it, like, I mean, if I remember correctly, with Mr. White, we, we specifically, I mean, he made an agreement, I don't know what that agreement was, but that he would at that time, when the other deal went through, do his, you know, how enforceable are those? How do we track those? Cause, you know, and that's kinda, we're kinda saying the same. I'm just, I'm not so much, I'm actually not, I'm in support of it for this project. I think if we could get sidewalk just in front of his house in those undeveloped, potentially saleable lots, not having sidewalk, I don't really disagree with that. I think that's the, I think that's a good solution. I'm just more talking about setting a precedent and how we wanna document it so that we remember the next time this comes up, cause these, you know, since we've taken that hard line that there's no exceptions, then every time we give an exception, you know, it's, it becomes a part of the conversation.
Yeah. What is to the north of your lots? Are there houses or there?
Yeah, there's a, a house, a Vern home though, or a Rosetta.
On the, on your side though?
And there's a house and a couple of old buildings.
And then there's nothing.
On there. And then after that, then there's three empty lots that are bare.
They're bare. Okay. Well, I drove past there this morning, and, and I see where that boat's sitting. I understand that.
Oh, it's, it's sitting in the driveway at this time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, it's not there right now, you mean?
No, probably not.
Oh, okay, cause I saw.
Yeah, you drove by this morning with the boat, it's, that's the north edge of the driveway.
Oh, okay. So you'd go at least past where it's at now, cause if you're saying, in my mind, if you're saying you're going to where the boat's sitting, it's like, holy cow, that won't even cover the driveway.
It won't cover what?
Just in the picture.
The driveway, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, I, I wouldn't gonna go across the driveway, cause the driveway is all gravel. You know, if there was curb and gutter, I'd, I'd go up to the curb, out to the street, but. I put word.
Yeah.
I just don't know all the driveways, I'm gonna stand up driving across it all the time, and there's none of the concrete on either side of it. That's, yeah, it's, cause I lived at fourteen forty-eight Kansas Avenue for seventeen years, Jamie Holfer. And then that, where, you know, there's driveway both sides, and it's a sidewalk that's stable, cause it's probably attached to the, uh, concrete. But this is just going to be. What I brought point.
So as Brian's, you know, made his motion to where the boat shows in this picture, that, that would cross his driveway then?
Yes, that, that, and so, and I, I had, it was my understanding that that driveway was going to be, um, concrete, but if it's not gonna be concrete, I certainly understand what he's saying, that, you know, you'd, you'd have gravel butted up on either side of the concrete, how well would that stand up?
We do have places in the city that, I mean, but my previous house was that way. It was gravel driveway with the concrete. I mean, it, it, I get what you're saying. It can, it's not as if it's impossible to have a, 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 a.
I mean, especially on the driveway side of the sidewalk would be, would settle enough to where that wouldn't wash away. Maybe the, maybe the approach side of the sidewalk would be a little more, but once you get up on that, across the driveway, across the sidewalk into the driveway, I think that would stay pretty well, stable, I mean.
I do have one more question, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so your new home that you just built, is there a sidewalk around the house currently, or do you intend to put sidewalk in front of?
Around the house? I've got a sidewalk along from the driveway.
Hey, my computer died, sorry.
Yeah. Trying, pardon me?
There's a ten-foot piece of sidewalk going from, from the south edge of my driveway to my, and my porch area.
Okay.
That I have there in my.
Your house is on the corner, correct?
Right.
Yes. What's that?
It's a corner lot that your house is in?
Yeah, it's a corner lot.
Cause that, that driveway, I drove up through there this afternoon. That driveway is kind of, if I remember right, is, is that true east-west, or is it kind of angled?
Angled with the house.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I remember.
As far as the gravel roads, I mean, if we're, if we're putting in sidewalks, you'd want a sidewalk where there's gravel road, so you don't have to walk in the mud. If it's, I mean, so that doesn't hold any, no pun intended, but that doesn't hold any water that way, because if, if you're walking in gravel and it's muddy, you're gonna be looking for a sidewalk, so, I mean. Is the rest of it? I, I understand that, but.
I also do put calcium carat down these years.
You do?
Yes.
No?
I paid for it two ye, two years ago. This year I'll be putting down myself, cause I work for, uh, Green Land, so we don't land it.
Sure.
We've been doing that working out, Pina.
Oh.
So I'll be doing that for dust control.
I see.
There, so it, it won't get muddy.
Yeah. Okay.
It's residual there now.
Yeah, I see. Well, um.
Can I just ask a quick question? Can you reiterate to me what that motion is?
We need, we need to go, we need to, we need to put lots, not.
Right, yeah.
One lot, two lot, three.
Massively worded.
The lots that the house is sitting on is eight, nine, and ten.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Six and seven are the two to the north that don't have anything on.
So we're saying, I kinda was writing this out. We require sidewalks on eight, nine, and ten and all of the south.
And all south.
And east, east and south.
Well, the, on the east, six and seven, but yes, I'm, I'm eight, nine, and ten, they would have.
Right, eight, nine, and ten, east and south.
And then the undeveloped lots would leave no sidewalks until they become developed.
No sidewalks on lots six and lots seven.
Correct.
Make sure.
Is that what you were intending to motion, right?
Yes. I can help you wordsmith it tomorrow too, just make sure that we get the lot numbers right.
So where am I on, on it, at the gravel driveway at this time?
What's that?
Do I have to go across the gravel driveway with the sidewalk?
Well, what lot is it on?
It's on lots.
That's what I wanna know.
Well, partial six and seven, yeah, or se, eight and nine, I'm sorry, partial eight and nine.
So it would stop in the middle?
No, it's, it's, it's a, the concrete would extend beyond.
Beyond the side.
So it would go completely through the driveway.
Through your driveway.
Yep.
The driveways right here.
Right.
Did all eight, nine, and ten.
If we didn't do it through, through your driveway in front of your house, you know, we may as well nick the whole thing, right?
I think it's important that we're consistent with what has been done recently, because just knowing what's happened in the past, I've lived here a long time, letting some people, allowing certain people not to have a sidewalk, and then requiring some to have a sidewalk is not a good policy, I don't believe, but this sounds like a, somewhat of a compromise, Brian's proposal, that the two that are undeveloped at this time would not have to have this sidewalk. Is that, am I understanding that correctly, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah.
My, my thought is, is that if we don't do the sidewalk across the driveway, then anybody who builds a new house is just gonna put a gravel driveway.
Right.
And not have to do the sidewalk. And that's really what we're trying to avoid as well.
Yeah.
My only other concern, though, Commissioner, um, Harvey, is echoing back to, uh, Commissioner Cluse, if we, I understand those two north lots are undeveloped and no plans on selling, maybe plans on building, I get that.
The tiny with the house owner, they're not gonna import this guy.
Oh, okay, I hear you. So maybe building a garage in the future or whatever, but if we do back off of that, we're gonna have more of this coming up in the very near future, very near future. And if we don't stand, i, i, if we're, if we're not gonna make a stand and stand in the concrete, then we're gonna be dragging through the gravel the whole time, every time, every time. And rightfully so. We should, we should. So I, that's just my two cents worth. I'm, I understand your thinking, uh, you, you know, it's.
Nobody's ever gonna use the south sidewalk.
What's that?
Nobody's ever gonna use the south sidewalk.
He can't say.
They walk down Iowa.
Yeah, I, I get that, I get that.
So that's where, in the beginning, it was okay just to do these. That has changed, which I understand.
We have some other new places that put sidewalks in, and they're not gonna have any people walking on them, so they say. I, I don't know that they are or not, or.
Do the sidewalks have to be three feet or four feet wide?
I think the minimum is four feet.
Four, especially for new construction.
Yeah. And we'd have the engineers, whatever, regardless if there is a requirement for that, we'd have the engineers reach out to you and, and help you with, give you the specs and stuff.
Um, I gotta get more gravel on that road because of water laid by my mailbox, which I'm putting gravel in the driveway anyway, another road, but it would just be nice if that water could drain somewhere, cause it doesn't drain anywhere.
It.
And, and I understand, cause it's, it's kind of a flat area. Supposedly, it's supposed to drain south.
Sure.
Across that intersection. Uh, it would be a cold hell when that happens.
Forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, in your building permit in two thousand twenty-three, I'm just assuming that it had on your it had on your building permit that sidewalks were required, correct? They are. It was. I know it was. I have a copy of it.
Again, guess what I'm gonna, I, I wouldn't be honest if I said it either way.
Yeah, I, I have to be totally honest with you. It was, cause I saw it. So I, it's not a surprise to anybody. It, it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, I guess I should say. Where it costs money, it does cost money.
Okay, and if this is what the moving is, can I get an extension of time where they don't have to be all done till the first block completed? Is that okay?
That's another discussion. That's a great discussion to have, absolutely.
And we've had a tough six weeks. My stepdaughter is dead from a stroke.
Yep.
And I'm not looking for mercy.
No, no.
No, we can work that out. That's not a problem.
We need more time to come up for the ones, because I don't have any reserves anymore.
And you may have more time than you think with that.
First of July.
You know, I understand. I mean, you might be able to get more time than what you bargained for.
It'll be done this year, this year.
Uh, uh, I'm just, and not to.
I'm, I'm doing it myself.
I see that and you do that, and that's, that's great. That's.
Sorry you interrupted.
No, you're fine. I, I've watched you. I've watched you build that house and, and that's great to do that. That's the self-satisfact- satisfaction you get out of that is great. That's worth a lot. But I'm just afraid if we take a step back, we're not gonna be able to step forward again. I, I just, I'm sorry, Mister Metzger, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that we do all the north and all the south?
I am, but, but that's not the motion.
Right, I know, but I, I understand, yeah.
Correct. So, we do have a motion and a second on the table, so.
That would be, that would be, your proposal is not to have any exemption at all, other than timeframe?
Correct. Uh, timeframe, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, got any two thoughts in the north too now?
That's only my suggestion. That's not the, what's that?
I'd like to call a point of order on this. We're getting into a discussion on, outside of what the
The motion, yeah, correct.
Um, one, and number two, Barry, this would require what kind of a vote? Majority?
This is a simple majority.
Simple majority.
Since it's not a wave or a, it's not a variance.
Correct.
It is a simple motion by the, by the commission.
So three to approve or not?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the motion, I'll have her read the motion before we vote, but I just wanna make sure everybody's done.
The question is, would you like to add to the motion a timeline?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, do you wanna amend that motion to give him extra time?
I would amend, add that on to my motion. Um, I would give him until, um, December thirty-first, considering the situation.
Appreciate that.
So I would second that amended motion.
Okay. Now, before we take a vote, is there any other discussion from any council?
Will, I would just ask that question again. Are we, i- if, if we approve the motion as Brian has presented it, are we gonna make a notation? Are we gonna say, you know, that it will be, or are we just saying those two lots? Cause if, if in five years he puts a, a garage on there, that's not gonna trigger, as it sits right now, that would not be a dwelling. So that would not trigger a necessity to, for him to put in sidewalks. So I'm just wondering, similar to what we did with Mister White.
It would, it would trigger a variance or, or a legal procedure, because we would have to use a covenant. If he wasn't going to apply for a variance, he would have to, to uh, file a covenant that would tie all five of those lots into one parcel, so that none of those lots could then be sold without the others.
So as it sits right now, he couldn't, did, did he have to do that on the three lots where he built the house together?
No. Because the, the, the reason for that is you can't have an accessory building without the residence.
But in this case, he has, I mean.
But that's why we would tie that then to these houses, so that it would all be considered one parcel.
Sure, but so then we just have to remember when we're voting to approve that, that we also need to talk about sidewalks.
Typically, that's not a voteable, uh, action. It, it, we just do it in-house. We just have them file a legal document that ties them all together. And it's filed at the county, so it's forever a record. Then if they ever ask to be released from it, then that takes a motion by this body.
Why aren't they tied together right now? As far as the owner?
It, it is, the deed probably ties them together, but for the purposes of restricting his ability to sell those lots individually, they're not tied together. His deed would tie them all together for that particular transaction.
Right. Yeah.
So can I just quick add again too? Part of Commissioner Smith's motion in the second original was that I, I just, I think it's lots, it's six and seven, I would have to get that, um, that they are not developed and won't be included with the sidewalks until those become developed. So that becomes part of this motion. For.
So it's lot eight, nine, and ten on the east and the full south.
Even into all of the south and east side, we'll have to go across the driveway on that.
That's the motion.
Yep.
And then we're gonna vote on an amendment for a timeline and then vote back on the original motion.
I, I appreciate where, where Rich is at with it. Um, cause is, is there any reason on those two lots that aren't included, that there couldn't be something filed on, for, on the title?
We can file an affidavit that just says he agrees to, um, that in the future, if, if lots are ever developed, then sidewalks must be installed. That's, that's nothing more than just an affidavit that the city attorney could write.
I totally understand.
You register with the registered deeds?
Yeah, and then it's always, and it's just in perpetuity. I like that idea. Hmm, that's not. Because my, my, my thought is, you know, there's technically one, two, three, three lots up there. If somebody bought all three of them, you and the neighbor, whoever they are, and if somebody built a house there, they're not gonna wanna put sidewalks in until they get the house built anyways. If you develop them, that's a different story, and then we need to tie them in with this. But ultimately, there's a lot of variables up there.
Well, and I, I guess the, the point of it is, you know, if, if, if this happens after Craig is no longer with it, or with us, no offense, but it's on, that way it's on title record.
Yeah.
And rather than relying on the, well, you remember that deal that.
And then it will show up in the title?
We, we won't be here anymore.
Well, true.
It'll be.
Yeah. I think he's an honest guy. He'll probably remind us, you know, hey, just so you remember.
We would take it, we would take, once he files a, the index stamp it and all that, we would just take a copy of that and then we would attach it to this, uh, address, so that it would always remain a, a permanent record in that address file. Not his personal file, but that address file.
So in that essence, whoever buys the other five lots, who somebody will someday, they're gonna have sidewalk on the east and the north, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
When they build on it, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
That's part of that staying consistent with what we've been doing.
Absolutely.
In fair.
Yep.
Yes.
Everybody okay? You okay, Mister Metzger?
Thank you.
Roll, all votes please.
So we're gonna vote on the amendment? Smith.
Hi.
Clue.
Hi.
Frank.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Mayor Robish.
Hi.
Now add that to the regular motion. And then vote again.
And now we can vote again.
Yep. You wanna state the, or, or is everybody clear? Everybody says yes. Roll, all votes please.
Okay. Do you know how many can, I don't have it worded perfectly. I gotta work with Barry on the lots.
Yeah.
Which requires sidewalks on lots eight, nine, and ten and all of the south, of all of the south and east side, and we'll have to go across the driveway on the house lot. Lots number six and seven that are undeveloped won't be included with sidewalks until those become developed. And to include a statement to register they could, that should lots eight, six, and seven become developable, it will be found, you know, title shirts, search, excuse me, and to allow a timeline of December thirty-first to finish sidewalks. It's not perfect, but.
Yeah.
We start to vote.
Very, very clear.
Yeah, okay.
And then I'll, I'll, I'll start crafting that affidavit and, and then you'll have to sign that. And we'll have to notarize it, and then you'll take it up to the county, once that's done, and file it with the registered deeds office. And then give us a copy and then everything will be good.
Let's, we have to vote on that, right?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Let's get the vote out of the way.
Yeah, let's get the vote out of the way.
The vote?
Yes.
Cause we don't know how it's gonna turn out.
Yeah, that's true. I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
I might be letting the horse out of the barn here if I'm not careful.
Roll, all votes please.
Smith.
Hi.
Clue.
Hi.
Frank.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Mayor Robish.
Nate. Thank you for coming in and, and clarifying all that. Okay.
Okay, I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
All right, where are we at here? Moving on to departmental items. Consider request from Parks and Recreation Director Chad Schroder to purchase, um, Kansas Mall furnishings in the amount of ninety-two hundred and sixty-two dollars. This project will be funded through Second Penny. Take it away, Mister Schroder.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is a report back from our work session last week on our site furnishings for Kansas Mall. Uh, I got some updated numbers that actually came back in a little lower than what we had talked about for budget last week. Uh, I'm asking for approval, so I can get these orders, so we can make our January third dusting off Dakota deadline, I'm gonna call it.
July third?
Uh, that's what I meant. I'm sorry about that.
It was a J month.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. And then, um, the trash receptacle won't be in till a little bit later. It's on back order, but all the other site furnishings will be in. I'm still working on the possible shade structure origin of it. We're just missing a few quotes on shipping and a few other details, and I'll have to bring that in at a later date. Those would never make it here by our July third deadline anyhow. So I guess I'm asking for motion approval for me to get this stuff ordered. And I'll ship it as soon as possible, so all the site furnishings, minus the trash receptacle, installed by that date.
I move to approve the purchase request and supplement it from the Second Penny.
I second.
Any questions, comments?
So just to be clear again, we're, we're still working on the shade, whether that be pergola, which I know there's still talk about that, some more pricing on, and I think Chad showed you some smaller s- uh, shade structures. But, so I mean, we're still, we're still moving forward by getting these on order. For sure, we'll have those in time, cause we know we're not gonna get the other stuff done in time. But with the work that we already did on that planter and then getting these, um, i- if we have things in place for the, for a shade structure, we might even move forward with getting what's there removed. We're, we're gonna do everything we can to have, by July third, have this place looking as dynamite as possible. But for sure, we knew we needed to get this stuff on, on order, but we, uh, so that, that's why Chad was unsure, should we wait until we know more, but we, we needed to get this stuff coming, so that's why we're bringing it to you this way. But we still understand the mission that he gave us last week during the work session, and we're, we're still going on that. Chad's been working his butt off. He's had to take some time off for some reason.
I'm so impressed that you brought it in at thirteen hundred dollars than it was a week ago. Good for you.
Thank you.
That's it, just wanted to mention.
Roll, all votes please.
Smith.
Hi.
Clue.
Hi.
Frank.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Mayor Robish.
Hi. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Eight point two, consider updated service contract for pre-employment psychological screenings for the police department and authorize the police chief to sign. And with us tonight, we have Adam Dora, the deputy chief with us. Um, do you have any insight on that?
Um, this is Doctor Sorenson. We've used her as the, as Chief's letter said, for the last five years, and the only difference is her rates went up.
There was, in your package, you saw the rates there, so.
If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
She's out of Aberdeen.
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve eight point two.
Second.
Any questions for Adam?
Is there a point? Right now, we have a good relationship. This is where we wanna stick, but is there a point where the price gets high enough that we go back and look for somebody different?
Um, we had, in the history of me working for the, I'll come here. Um, since I've been with the department and on, on hiring boards, um, we have had different uh, doctors that do this, and she is by far the best, and we've, we had to shop around to find her. And a lot of other communities and cities use her, and, um, we're satisfied with what she does. So it's, that's kinda where, where you get what you pay for, this kind of thing. So, that's a varied rope job, that, some of the previous ones didn't have to.
Good.
Is, I have a question, if I may. Is this a fairly standard contract, the same every year, and is this something we need to have Mister Blue review, or is it pretty much standard?
To, uh, to Chief Larni's knowledge, we never did have a contract with her.
Oh.
Um, she would just, we would refer our, our new hires to her. She would do them, and, um, uh, this contracting, I believe, is something that she has, the other cities that she does this for.
Okay.
She requested that, you know, her rates went up a little bit, and she sent us this.
We've also used her as, not just pre-screening, but also post-trauma.
That, that is correct.
Guidance.
Yep.
I would just suggest that we have Mister Blue review it, just to be legally compliant and have that in place.
Can do that. You all right with that? We'll get that on the books for you right away and get the okay.
I'm sure it won't be too tough. It's not very long.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, do we need to add?
Should add that to the motion.
Who'd, who'd assign?
Um.
I think it says stop, the rise of police.
The police chief.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought I read that off, but.
But do we need to amend the motion?
In the motion, I guess.
Okay.
Oh, I assumed it was.
Yeah, my motion was to approve eight point two, which authorizes the police chief to sign as well.
But do we need to amend that for, uh, for pending legal review?
I, I'll. I'll amend it to allow for legal review prior to having the police chief sign it.
So it's, it's approval, it's approval conditional on.
Continual of attorney review.
And who seconded that? Did Mister Clute, or did, who seconded that motion? I can't remember.
I think I do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm seconding that again.
Okay, all right. Okay, so.
Paying attention with everybody else, we only need to.
Okay. All right. Roll, all votes.
Smith.
Hi.
Clue.
Hi.
Frank.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Mayor Robish.
Hi. Thank you, Adam. Uh, completing our.